This morning by Commissioner John Pecus.
Thank you.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I'd like to remind everybody to silence their cellphones this morning if they would. There's meeting documents next to Commissioner Kelly, and you need a listening device. Robert over here in the blue shirt raising his hand has some assistance there. If not, any other items will go to routine business.
Routine business, number one, is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve routine business. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two are to approve the county commission minutes of April 2nd, 2013.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the commission minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes again.
Item three are to approve the bills to be paid in the amount of $760,000.
Pay the bills.
Seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I'll second the bills.
Evidently Commissioner Barth gets paid by the hour. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item four, reports. A is the Minnehaha County Human Services Report for March 2013. Item B is the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department Report for March 2013. And item C is the auditor's account with the county treasurer as of March 31st, 2013. Those reports are filed in the county auditor's office. Item five is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
Move the routine.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on those? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Unanimously passes again.
There are no applications for abatements today. Item seven are notices and requests. A notice of construction schedule for the Russell Street construction from Westport Avenue to Minnesota Avenue was received. There are no planning and zoning notices today or petition for compromise of lane. The next item is opportunity for public comment.
If anyone in the audience would like to make a comment about anything that's not on the agenda, we'd be happy to hear from you now. If not, we'll move on. Anyone got an interest? Nope, we'll go to the next item.
Regular business. Item 10 is a presentation of the Helpline Center's 2012 Community Trends Report for the greater Sioux Falls area. Janet Kidams-Lally.
Morning Janet.
Good morning, everybody. Pleased to be here with you this morning. Wanted to give you an update on the community trends from the Helpline Center, from the 2-1-1 phone calls. You have a hard copy in front of you, and I'll walk you through some of the statistics and data that we have collected over the past year. We'll start in the center of your folder that talks about the calls on 2-1-1. Across the top, it talks about the total volume of 2-1-1 calls, and you'll notice that we were just over 38,000 phone calls last year, which is down slightly from where we were at in 2011. And that is kind of a national trend. That is what's mirrored nationally. 2-1-1s across the country were down about 5% in their call volume. And that's theorized just because people are accessing information through the phone system but also through other sources of technology, through our online database. And I'll cover that a little bit later. As far as our types of phone calls, there have been some changes, significant changes in the types of phone calls we've been receiving. Our information and referral phone calls continue to be the highest volume of calls we receive. Those are people calling for social service information, are people looking for resources in the community. They have needs, and they call the 2-1-1 to find out how to get those needs met. Most commonly, basic needs, government services, those kinds of things. Our listening and support phone calls, individuals who literally are struggling, and we provide listening and support. And that has seen a significant increase over the past year. You'll notice that in 2012, it was about 9% of the phone calls we had taken were listening and support. The prior year, it was 4%. So a significant increase with listening and support phone calls. And likewise, crisis phone calls, that is suicide, domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse phone calls, they represented just over 2.5% of our phone calls. Last year, it was less than 1%. So what we're seeing is a change in the types of phone calls to 2-1-1. Certainly still providing connections and resources to nonprofit and social service agencies, but those individuals are needing more support, more time to kind of process what's going on in their life. And that's what 2-1-1 is there for, to help them kind of understand and work through some of those emotions that go along with the struggles in their life. Other significant change in how we report our data is that the Helpline Center a year and a half ago literally reclassified all of the resources in our database. We have over 3,000 programs and agencies, and that's social services, nonprofit, and government resources in our database. And what we did is we reclassified them based on a national taxonomy system. So what that means is our data is classified the same way as Los Angeles, the same way as Fargo, the same way as Cincinnati. And previously, it was not done that way. So what I can show you now is a comparison between our percentage of phone calls versus what nationally we're seeing for 2-1-1. And that's the section you'll see right underneath there. I'll draw your attention to just a couple differences, what we're seeing here in Sioux Falls versus what we're seeing across the country. There are three areas at the very bottom of that list. It talks about mental health and addictions, other government economic services, and transportation. And you'll notice that we see a significantly larger portion of our phone calls falling in those areas as compared to the national 2-1-1. With our mental health and addictions, it's significantly higher than what they see nationally. And I like to think that's because we do an excellent job in this area of promoting 2-1-1 as an access point for mental health and addiction services and get people connected with the resources that we need. And obviously, we work very closely with the mobile crisis team to make sure people get the help they need. Underneath other government economic services, I would say that we have a wonderful relationship with the Minnehaha County government as well as the city of Sioux Falls in connecting people to those appropriate government services. Answer a lot of phone calls about people wanting to know where to get registered to vote, as an example. And transportation, you'll notice that we are higher than the national average with that. And I think that just points to ongoing discussions that have been happening about transportation concerns within our community. There are a few areas where we are significantly lower than the national average: food and meals, housing utilities, income support and assistance. And I think that speaks more to what's going on on a national level than what's going on here. And I think that speaks to the economic recession that happened, and it was, there are parts of the country that were more severely hit than we were. And so they just saw a larger percentage of their phone calls falling in those areas than we did. Underneath that, it just talks about our online searches, and 92,000 searches were completed in our online database. More people are just turning towards searching for resources through the website as opposed to increase in phone calls on 2-1-1. But certainly, a very important way for them to get that resource information. Other than that, I'll just draw your attention to, on the left-hand side of your folder, it talks about the top caller needs that we saw in the past year. And those, basic needs, you know, food, clothing, shelter, continue to be the number-one need of our callers. Underneath that is organizational, community services, and that's where a lot of our government service requests, and like if people want to make a donation to a nonprofit, that's where that falls. Third is the mental health and substance abuse. And I won't go through all of those, but you can kind of get a sense of the reasons people are calling 2-1-1 and what they're looking for. Underneath that is the top unmet needs in our community that we saw this past year. Those haven't changed significantly. Transportation continues to be an unmet need, and you can see how that is detailed, whether that's gas assistance or car repairs, bus tickets, rides to appointments, those kinds of things. Housing, rent assistance, moving assistance, those kinds of things. There certainly are programs that do meet those needs. Oftentimes, it depends what time of the month that an individual contacts us as far as how many referrals or if there's resources available for them. So, and you can see on through the list where those other unmet needs fall. The one that's probably different this year is we had some more holiday assistance, unmet needs. And previously, last year, we had some dental needs that weren't unmet needs, but that has kind of fallen further down the list. So that's a good sign with that. The last section talks about suicide-related phone calls, just in our community and across the state. In Sioux Falls, there was 401 suicide-related phone calls that we answered, and those range from somebody who is in immediate crisis, just having thoughts of suicide, all the way to being in, needing immediate intervention because their life is in danger. There's just a couple of bar charts there that explain the different types of phone calls we answered on that suicide line, and then, of course, from the county coroner from Minnehaha, just the number of suicide deaths for the year. Our newest program is right underneath that, and that's our teen crisis texting service. That is relatively new. We just started that this past fall in the Sioux Empire area, and it's a way for teenagers to access support. Oftentimes, teenagers don't use their phone to call, they use their phone to text. And so we wanted to be available to reach teens that were in crisis. And so it's been very well received. We, as you can see on the types of text messages that we receive from teens, relationship problems, you know, family problems, suicide depression are the common ones that teens are texting us about. And so, literally in our office, it's on a computer system. It comes in through our computer, and we just type on our keyboard back to the teen who is in crisis and kind of walk them through what's going on in their life. But it's a great way for them to reach out for help. It's confidential and anonymous and very comfortable for them. And we know we're reaching a new audience that they would not historically have picked up the phone to dial us with those kinds of issues. So we hope to see that program continue to grow and reach more and more high school students across our area. So that is quickly the summary of kind of what we've seen in the past year from the Helpline Center with 2-1-1, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Janet. Does anyone have any questions for Janet? Commissioner Barth?
On the texting thing, where it talks about the average text time being 97 minutes, so that's back and forth for 97 minutes?
Yes, that is correct. The texting conversations take longer than a phone conversation, and some of that just because it takes a little bit longer for them to type on their phone and for us to type on our keyboard. And sometimes there's pauses in between the communications, but on average, it is a more high-touch communication method than our phone system.
Other questions for Janet?
Do you try to refer them back, if they're on the text, try and get them to call you?
What we-
Or do you just continue the texting conversation?
We generally continue to communicate through texting because what we've found is that they do not want to talk to us on the phone. If we encourage them to do that, nope, they just want to text. And so we'll be available to them that way.
So they just type 2-1-1 and message?
It's actually a short code and a keyword. It's a six-digit code, and the keyword is "I care." And so if they type, they text that to us, and it pops up in our computer system, and we realize, it alerts us, and we have a text message, and we start typing back and forth to them.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
You're a very valuable part of our community, and we appreciate your taking time this morning.
Thank you.
Take care.
Item number 11 is issue a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunication Weeks, April 14th through the 20th, 2013. Ken McFarland.
I can't think of anything, Jason, I can't think of anything more appropriate right now for National Telecommunications Workers Week than what we're going on right now. And then the Karen Ketchum came over and asked me to handle this for her, because as you might realize, he's a little swamped right now. But he did, he did want to go ahead and have the commission issue the proclamation. So with that, oops, I'm locked up. Jason? And so, on behalf of all of our 911 operators next door, we've asked that the commission issue a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, which is April 14th through the 20th, which is next week. And if the chairman would allow, I would go ahead and read the proclamation.
You're doing great.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require responses from police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our public police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone Metro Communications. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas the public safety telecommunicators and Metro Communications Agency have contributed greatly to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, we, the Minnehaha County Commission, who hereby proclaim the week of April 14th through the 20th, 2013, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Minnehaha County, in honor of the women and men whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe, dated this ninth day of April, 2013. And like I said, in my quick conversations with Darren this morning, they are extremely busy this, right now, with a number of phone calls for down power lines, down branches, motorists in trouble out in the rural areas. So they're doing what they do and what they do well.
Yep, they sure do.
Move to issue the proclamation.
Motion and a second. Second to issue the proclamation. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
Item 12 is consider a resolution supporting efforts to maintain the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds. Jeff Har-
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, representing our group on the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners at our last board meeting, this was an item that we discussed on the behest of NACO, the National Association of County Officials. And basically, in the talk of tax reform, one of the things that they've discussed doing away with is the tax exemption for municipal bonds, which would include our bonds. And so they've asked us to bring a resolution to support maintaining it. Now, we did have discussion at that meeting to include, you know, obviously, every entity, whether it's the realtors and the mortgage tax deduction, or, you know, people that want to keep their charitable deductions going. Everybody wants to protect their part. And certainly, you know, if we were to do away with all of them, we would be maybe more amicable towards doing our share. But in the absence of universal doing away with these things, we voted unanimously in the board to endorse a resolution to maintain the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds. And the resolution is here in our documents here, and I certainly can read it. Would that be your pleasure?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Whereas the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds is nearly a century old and is vital to funding local infrastructure and economic development. And whereas of the 1.65 trillion of local infrastructure investment over the last decade using tax-exempt bonds, nearly all of it was in six categories. 514 billion for primary and secondary schools, 288 billion for hospitals, 258 billion for water and sewer facilities, 178 billion for roads, highways, and streets, 147 billion for public power projects, and 106 billion for mass transit. And whereas any move to change the current tax treatment of local government bonds would lead to higher borrowing costs for local governments, and whereas without tax-exempt financing, much-needed infrastructure improvements would likely be delayed, and whereas tax-exempt bonds are a critical tool for South Dakota counties to facilitate budgeting and financing of long-term investments in the infrastructure and facilities necessary to meet public demand for government services, and whereas without the tax exemption, the effectiveness of the bond market would be significantly dampened, creating higher borrowing costs for county government, less investment in infrastructure, and fewer jobs. Now therefore be it resolved that Minnehaha County does hereby support maintaining the current tax-exempt status of municipal bonds. I would make the motion to approve this.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second to the resolution?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions for Jeff? Commissioner Kelly?
Just a comment. We continually send the message to Washington to cut spending and to cut tax loopholes. And every time they come up with something, there's huge numbers of groups that come out and say, "Not ours, don't touch ours." And, you know, I don't know how we're ever going to get the country solved if, now you got, I mean, how many thousands of counties probably passing the same resolution. I don't know how we can solve our problem if we don't allow some of this stuff to go away, but I, it's just a personal comment.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Barth?
Again, you know, that, we did discuss that. And certainly, you know, if they were to do away with all of them, we would be, you know, more amicable towards doing away with ours. But in the absence, we don't want to be the only one hung out to dry.
Other questions or comments? Anybody from the audience have comments? If not, I think we'll probably need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Hiberger?
I'm going to abstain.
Kelly?
No.
Pecus?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes. Motion passes three to one. Item number-
Item number 13. Consider a motion to supplement $17,028 to the Emergency Food and Shelter Program Budget from the Emergency Food and Shelter Program representing, Fund representing the first half of the 2013 Emergency Food and Shelter Program allocation. Carol Muller?
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Human Services. Yes, on an annual basis, we usually come forward to you asking for a supplement to the budget representing the monies that come in through the Emergency Food and Shelter Program. These are federal dollars that come through FEMA. I think it's about 30 years now that they've been doing this. We're doing something a little bit different this year in that we're working with some local organizations. These monies are not meant to replace any existing dollars, rather to go through and meet a need that is not out there. So what we're doing this year a little bit differently, we will serve as the fiscal conduit, Minnehaha County will be. Our local recipient organizations, our lead recipient organizations will be St. Francis House and Southeastern Behavioral Healthcare and Good Shepherd Center. What we're going to do different this year is work with them on short-term supportive services for people that need to be put up in a really short-term timeframe that probably don't meet our needs, our categories, and we can go through and do some great things and get them housed in a very rapid effort, and hopefully go through and get them into an apartment in the first month. So we're looking at doing that. Good Shepherd Center, we're going to try something a little bit differently. They don't provide breakfast down there, and so for the people who could really stand, one of the things we've learned from Safe Home is that getting a good breakfast in people is very important. And we're going to go through and try that for a couple months. These dollars all need to be expanded by the end of May, so we're pleased to have our lead recipient organization step up to the plate and do things a little bit differently. This represents half the money. It'll be a total of $34,000.
Thank you, Carol. Questions for you, Carol? Commissioner Kelly?
Carol, how much was the whole state allocation, do you know?
You know, I don't know that. Those dollars actually come down the channel through Feeding, South Dakota.
Other questions?
I'll make the motion.
A motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 14 is authorize the chairman to sign an amendment to contract between Minnehaha County and Correct Care Solutions for Detoxification Facility Management. Ken McFarland.
As you know, Minnehaha County currently has a contract with Correct Care Solutions to operate the Detox Center in the Public Safety Building next door. They are in the last year of their agreement, and as you know, we will need to go out for an RFP later in the year for the service. However, during this last year of the agreement, we have a contract addendum for them, which would, recognizes the fact that we've added additional people over there, particularly to cover the night shift, to the tune of about 2.7 FTEs. Our current budget for detox is $716,778, and that's located within the sheriff's office budget. However, with the additional personnel that we've authorized to be placed over there, this would bring the contract up to, for 2013, for a total of $847,278. And this contract extension is just merely through the end of the year, which, again, they are in their last year, and we will need to go out for a request for proposals later on, probably this summer.
Thank you, Ken. Any questions or comments about the contract?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Just one question. And Ken, this is a reimbursement deal, though, isn't that so? That if they don't spend $842,000, we don't pay-
Yes, it's based on an actual, it's based on an actual cost contract, and we do true-ups and settlements quarterly, but this would represent our estimate of the cost, all things being on track, of what the actual cost would be through the end of the year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Ken.
Item 15, consider a motion to authorize acceptance of South Dakota Attorney General's Office State Drug Fund Grant Award in the amount of $23,358 to the Sheriff's Department, and authorize the purchase of a Dodge Ram 1500 pickup for $23,358 from Wagner Auto, Pierre, South Dakota, from Contract 16417, competitively bid and awarded by the State of South Dakota. Kristin Triana.
Good morning. Kristin Triana with the Sheriff's Office. I'm coming before you today to request authorization to accept an award from the Attorney General's Office from the Drug Fund. Those are funds that are, that they're able to collect due to crimes involving drugs. So sometimes it seized property, seized cash, things like that. We were able to be offered an award of $23,358, which is the exact amount, in order to purchase a vehicle for a detective that has moved into the Drug Task Force. So the first question or first request I would have for you is to authorize the acceptance of the award.
We'll take this in two parts. As Kristin said, I think we need to approve the grant first, and then the second part would be to approve the contract with the state, correct?
Move to approve the grant.
Second. We have harmony this morning?
Oh, my God.
Who wants to be second?
I'm the second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the grant. Any questions for Kristin? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
And then the second part of my request would be to authorize us to go ahead and order and purchase. It is a Dodge Ram pickup. It's from Wagner Auto in Pierre. And we also were going to put in a little bit larger engine as far as, then it matches the grant as far as those options. And so that'll be our request.
Questions for Kristin? If not, I need a motion to approve the purchase of a vehicle.
As I can make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the vehicle.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
Item 16 is consider a motion to authorize the purchase of global positioning equipment in the amount of $52,666.41 from Frontier Precision, Bismarck, North Dakota, by the Highway Department, from Contract Number 16408, competitively bid and awarded by the State of South Dakota, D.J. Boothby.
Morning, D.J.
Commissioner, D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. This morning, I'm requesting your authorization to purchase GPS equipment for our newly hired surveyor engineering specialist. This quote was received based off of the South Dakota State Procurement Contract and is for Frontier Precision out of Bismarck, North Dakota. And if you have any questions about the equipment or its function, I can answer them at this time.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for D.J. on this award? If not, I have a couple of questions, D.J.
Okay.
When I looked at the bid specs, so to speak, and the award documentation, it looks like there's other- like there's other pieces. Are those to complete the total package, or why are those different than the?
That's correct. It's basically to complete a total package, surveying package. We don't have any equipment right now, and I think when the State bid out their annual bid letting, there was an addendum that you may or may not have received. So about sixty percent of the items listed on this, on this informational sheet from Frontier Precision is part of the State contract, and the remaining forty percent was not part of the contract. However, there is a bid exemption because it is a computer equipment or, or equipment that's proprietary equipment that is being purchased. And so about, like I said, sixty percent, thirty-three thousand dollars of the fifty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars is, is off of the State contract.
Does the additional forty percent fit in the budget allocation process that we went through last year?
Yep. All of this equipment will be well within our, our department budget. We're going to be moving some things around between various ASNs, but overall, it's going to have a huge cost savings for our department. Essentially, what we'll be able to do is complete all of our surveying work in-house, and that will save tens of thousands of dollars every year.
Anyone else have any questions for D.J.?
I would pass them.
Commissioner Barth?
So will this equipment last us for many years, then? I mean, this...
You know, with all electronics, there's going to be upgrades that are available in the future. This equipment should last ten years or so, a lifetime expectancy, but we'll probably look at upgrading in three to five years, and then this would be available for a trade-in. That's what's typically done in the industry is between three and five years, you look at trading it in if it's in good condition, and you can get a pretty good return on your, your trade-in. And because this is our, basically our first experience owning our own surveying equipment in the department, that would, I guess, be our goal looking forward, but we'll see how it works, and, and we may end up owning it longer than that. We did also look at leasing options, and this was very significantly cheaper than, than a long-term lease.
Commissioner Kelly?
D.J., you, this is the first time we've had this, so we've had to contract it out before?
Correct.
Do you know how much we spent, say, in 2011 or 2012 on contract?
With essentially every bridge project that you guys have authorized, there's been anywhere from six thousand dollars to about twelve thousand dollars in surveying costs, and, and we'll be able to do all of that in-house if we choose to do that.
Thank you.
My last question, if I might. How many times do you think we're going to use this equipment on an annual basis?
On a regular basis.
Yeah, how many times are we going to do an inspection or whatever to use the equipment itself?
The equipment is a surveying piece of equipment, and it will be used on a regular basis, on a weekly basis.
Okay.
In the winter times, that will be not as much, of course, but it's not inspection equipment, so when we're doing a bridge project, for example, it'll be used on the upfront part of the project where we're going out and establishing a, a map basically of the project site, project area.
Okay. So it is going, is going to be weekly?
Yeah, weekly, for sure. Another thing that we'll use it a lot of times for is, I told the Commission before that we've had a lot of problems with our right-of-way and right-of-way issues, and we'll use this equipment to prepare flats and, and things like that, to try to clear that up in the next several years.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Pecus?
D.J., is this considered the new standard in the industry to use global positioning to try to determine the right-of-ways and, of course, to help you in your surveying?
Yeah, there's, there's basically two different ways, well, two different modern ways that we can do this, and this is one of the two ways. The other way would be to use a robotic toll station. We also price that out. With, with one person being our surveying crew, this just works better than, than using a robotic toll station.
Any other questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion and a second.
Make motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, D.J.
Item seventeen is a public hearing to consider an appeal of a decision by the Minnehaw County Planning Commission to approve with conditions, conditional use permit, thirteen days. Ryan Struff.
Good morning, Ryan. Before we get started, I'm just going to try to lay out a little bit of ground rules, if you will, about the conversation we're going to have this morning. This is at least the third time, I think, we've seen this. Most of us received one hundred and sixty-six pages from one side of the group and ninety-one pages from the other. We've all had the opportunity to read that, so you don't really need to go through all of that again with us unless there's a reason to do that. We've also got a staff summary from planning and zoning, so that's great. What we intend to do is to have Ryan do a staff report. We'll ask some questions, and then we'll let the, the gun club make their presentation, if they will, and then the opponents, if they're interested to respond, and then we'll take some rebuttals. But before we get started in that, I'd kind of liked to indicate that we would hope that you won't duplicate conversation, if you will. If there is some of that, that's fine. We'd like to know how many people plan on speaking, maybe from the gun club? If you'd raise your hand, give us some idea how many minutes, hours, we might be here this morning? Just a couple of you? Okay, thank you. And from the opponent's side, a couple also? That's about fifty less than I expected on both sides, so that's good. I'm glad you're organized. Ryan, are you ready to start?
I believe so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
For the clarity of the record, I do want to make a motion to have the one hundred and sixty-six pages submitted by the proponents and the ninety-one pages submitted by the opponents made part of the record.
Second. Thank you, John. We have a motion and a second to indicate that we will include the one hundred and sixty-six pages from the gun club and the ninety-one pages from the opponents included in the records. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes. And if you, oh, perfect.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ryan Struff, Minnehaw County Planning. Again, this is an appeal of the Planning Commission action from February 25th, 2013. The appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve conditional use permit 1312 to allow rifle and pistol range consisting of three long-range bays and five short-range bays was submitted by the following parties. Again, this was the appeal. The first one was on March 1st, 2012, by Charles Heck, which is the president of the Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club, and secondly, on March 4th, 2013, by Kurt and Kelly Valnez. Like I had stated, this action from the Planning Commission was from February 25th, 2013. The Minnehaw County Planning Commission approved, four to one, to approve conditional use permit 1312 with the twenty-six conditions that were stated. Just kind of a brief background on the Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club and their application. The petitioner submitted an application to allow five short-range bays, and then in addition to that, the three previously approved long-range bays that were approved in 1981. The subject property is located in Section 24 of Brandon Township, approximately two miles northeast of Brandon. The petitioner has applied to amend their conditional use permit in order to add the five short-range bays in addition to their three long-range bays. Their proposed change will add the five short-range bays, and in addition, again, will have the three long-range bays and should be minimal impact on the neighboring properties and agricultural land in the area. However, the noise associated with the short-range bays could impact the use and enjoyment of the surrounding properties when these ranges are in use. In order to mitigate this noise population, perimeter berms and trees have been installed throughout the area and installed around the shooting bays located at the property. The Planning Commission, along with staff, believes that the most effective way to move forward with an amendment to a conditional use permit is to current, that is in current violation, is to repeal all the previously issued conditional use permits associated with this use while creating one new comprehensive permit detailing the entire facility. At this point, the entire facility and all safety concerns of the County Commission and Planning Commission related to the three long-range bays and the five short-range bays can be addressed in order to maintain an effective operation procedures at this range. So before you, I have two different actions. The first action is to uphold the Planning Commission's decision to approve conditional use permit 1312 with the following twenty-six conditions, and would you guys like me to read through them?
Does anyone like to have those read to you? Frankly, I think we've had this many times before. We can read those ourselves. We have read those ourselves.
I can also go over the changes that they made and their proposed, that they'd sent to you. I can go over them briefly, too. So again, the first action is to uphold the Planning Commission's decision.
Excuse me, just for a second, Ryan. Does anybody on either side have any concerns about not reading those?
We're fine with them not being read.
Okay.
And we prefer to summarize our own position rather than having the planning office representations of all our decisions.
That's great. If, Ryan, if you'd like to read the changes, though, that would be good.
Okay. So again, I'll just go over the, the two actions that staff has proposed here. Again, is to uphold the Planning Commission's decision and to approve the permit with the twenty-six conditions. The other action is to revise the Planning Commission's recommendations or deny the conditional use permit 1312. Again, I have a lot of supportive attachments in here. Some of them are letters of concern, letters of support. We have the NRA Range Evaluation Report. We have the memo from the sheriff and the D.C.I. and the L.E.T. memo, letter from the Department of Energy. We have the WAPA easement map, and then also the Planning Commission minutes and the approval letter, the site plan, the narrative and packet information that was provided by the Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club, and then also the petition and request for action against the Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club that was submitted by the surrounding property owners. In regards to the changes, their proposed resolution and the, the twenty-six conditions that were approved by the Planning Commission, there was a change.
Excuse me, Ryan. Is this a change from what we were presented initially or what the Planning Commission approved?
Okay. If you, these were changes that I was looking at compared to what the Big Sioux submitted to us, where their proposal is. If you'd like to hear from them and about their changes and their proposal?
No, I just wanted to know where they were at. So that's okay. That's fine.
The changes that staff would like to point out, then, there's a change to condition number three, which goes over the, the range officers, the range officers that are on duty. Also a change to condition number 10, that a baffling system of the short-range bays shall be required if projectiles are not contained within the boundaries of the property. They have changed them, with them, too. Staff is, is okay with the changes that they made on them to conditions. They have just kind of wordsmithed them a little bit differently than staff has, or the Planning Commission had approved them. The other conditions that were taken out by their proposed resolution, and so I can just briefly go over the ones that they left out of their propos, their proposal. And again, these were put in because of the concerns of the County Commission and the Planning Commission regarding safety of the range. So the ones that were left out of the proposed proposal by the Big Sioux and Rifle and Pistol Club. Range officers shall be required, excuse me, range officer requirements shall apply to both members and non-members participating in active shooting. A range officer should always be required. Number six, also left this one out, that blue-sky baffles shall be installed and maintained on all three long-range bays. That all blue-sky baffles shall be completely installed on, on all three long-range bays by January 1st, 2015. That the hundred-yard range shall remain closed until the blue-sky baffles are installed. That when the baffling system is not applicable or where blue sky can be seen, for example, from the prone position, a bar or similar device shall be placed across a firing bench or firing area in a long-range shooting base to restrict the fire angle and to ensure that bullets remain within the embankments. Also, that the schedule of operational days shall be provided by the Planning Commission, excuse me, be provided to the Planning Department annually by March 1st. That further safety inspections and/or safety precautions shall be required if the public health and safety are threatened due to the lack of projectile containment or similar life-threatening incidents. That all equipment, i.e. towers and lines in the immediate vicinity owned by the Department of Energy or other similar corporations, shall be kept free of projectiles. Hence, no shooting of the towers or lines shall occur from this property. That outdoor lighting shall be fully cut off and fully shielded design. That parking and regu, and loading regulations outlined in Article 15 of Minnehaw County's ordinance shall be met. That building permits and other required inspections shall be obtained, and that all signage shall comply with the zoning ordinance requirements stated in Article 16 on-premise signs and Article 17 off-premise signs. And number six, excuse me, 26, that staff has, under the Planning Commission's recommendation, that all previously approved conditional use permits for the property regarding the rifle and pistol range shall be repealed. This includes conditional use permit 8110, 8210, 0195, and 1119. So again, the, the action are to uphold the Planning Commission or revise their conditions or deny that permit. I do have a couple photos here and a couple maps that, that kind of show you the property. Again, the property northeast of Brandon. You can see on the map here where their parking, where their clubhouse is, the 50-yard range with baffles, the 200-yard range with baffles. The only range currently that does not have baffles is this 100-yard range right here. The parking in the back here, and then their, their tactical range bays and storage shed on the west side. Again, here are just the approved conditions by the Planning Commission. This year, I had talked with the Department of Energy, and they had provided me with an approximate area where their easement runs through the property. And then here are some photos of the ranges that are, that are baffled. For example, here, here's the 50-yard range with the baffles installed. Again, another shot of the 50-yard range. And this is from on top of their berms, again, the 50-yard range. The baffles that have been installed on the 200-yard range, and there's a couple more photos of the 200-yard range here as well. And then when we were out there, that was when the 100-yard range was still closed. Again, there are no baffles that have been installed in that portion of the range. Here you can see plenty of, as you'd say, blue sky, where projectiles could potentially go over these berms and impact other properties.
Say, Ryan, going back two slides there, is that the bar, then, that would protect from going over the berm? Is that the theory there?
That's, in, when they use that, that is to, to assist in the projectiles not going out of them and embankments.
Right. Thank you.
And just keep in mind that that was also installed on the other bays that now have the baffles as well. And then here are the, the tactical or the five short-range bays. They all look very similar. They all have the berms installed at least, at least 10 feet, which the 10 feet has been conditioned in the permit since 1981. Again, just some, some more angles of the ranges, the driveway and the clubhouse. And I guess that, I can open that up for questions from you guys if you have anything to make.
Thank you, Ryan. Does anyone have any questions of him at the current time? Commissioner Kelly?
Ryan, on the 100-yard range, do you know how far, maybe I'll have to ask this of the gun club, but how far an airgun bullet can travel with velocity if it was up, for instance?
Well, I guess...
A mile, half mile, or you don't know?
I think that you can ask them that question.
Okay.
But then you have to remember, it depends on what type of gun they're shooting.
Understand, but.
Other questions for Ryan? Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. If we'd have representatives from the gun club come up, please, that'd be great. How much time do you think you'll need this morning to at least make your presentation?
I'm not planning on taking a long time to do this. I'm going to go over some of the initial factual matters and what we seek the commission to do. And Mr. Serska will address a couple of the perful legal issues, but I'm not going to spend a half hour in front of him.
That's good. I'm just going to try to keep track of the time so both people have the same amount of time, if you will.
And we'd like to reserve some time for rebuttal.
Absolutely.
I'm John Haverly, four-six-zero-five South Magnolia Circle, Minnehaha County, South Dakota. I'm here for this Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club. And on our appeal of our application for conditional use permit thirteen dash zero-one-two, this application relates solely to the five short-range shooting bays. Equally important to what it does concern is what it does not concern. Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club is not seeking a modification, review, consolidation, change, or any review of our existing permits, including without limitation eighty-one-ten, eighty-two-ten, oh-one-ninety-five, or eleven-nineteen. We did not bring that before in the planning office, and we're not bringing it before this board or this county commission because we have, I guess we filed our application, and that's what we would like you to address. The conditional use application was brought completely consistent with the procedural and substantive rules established by this commission. We followed the rules, and we would like the planning and zoning to equally do that. I'd like to point out that there was a, that we perceive that and know that we have an absolute duty of candor to this board, and we would hope that you would hold the planning office to that same requirement. We did not seek a review. At no time have we sought a review. If we refer to our application for a conditional use permit, we expressly advised the planning office that we were not seeking a review of our existing permits or modification of those permits. The ordinances that this commission established for planning and zoning do not allow for review. If you recall, the first time we were here, we discussed whether or not that was a wise public policy issue. Personally, I think any business that sought to do business in Minnehaha County would be hard-pressed to make that decision to do that if their conditional use permit was subject to review at the whim of the Planning Commission. In any event, it's not allowed under current ordinance. That's a matter that I think you guys should carefully consider in looking at how business and land use is handled in the county. We seek ratification of the verbal approval that we received for those five bays from the previous planning official. I apologize, I wasn't trying to be surly in my typing by calling him the precious one, but my keyboarding skills aren't what they should be if you look at exhibit fourteen on the package that we provided. The short-range bays were constructed completely consistent with the requirements that were initially imposed by this commission when it was acting as a board of adjustment back in nineteen eighty-one. Ten-foot berms, all the typical safety things. The bays operated for eight years without incident. And in fact, there's no incident that's occurred even now with the current complaints. This nation, state, and county are based on the rule of law. We follow the rules. We expect the planning office to follow the rules, and we would hope that this commission would follow the substantive rules they've established in the planning and zoning process, including those conditions under the conditional use process. We offer exhibit fourteen to our previous submission as an item that we think appropriately deals with that, recognizes the rule of law, and adequately protects the public safety and convenience in our conditional use permit. We urge you and ask you to carefully consider and adopt that resolution. As we've stated before, we're reserving all our rights to any other remedies that we may have against any entity or person. And at this point, I'd like to defer to Don Serska to address some of those issues.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. I have a hand out here, it's only two pages.
Don, you're going to have to identify yourself and give us your address, please.
My name is Donald Serska, S-R-S-T-K-A. I'm an attorney. I reside in Minnehaha County.
I need a street address, don't I?
You want my address?
Yeah, either your office or home.
Twenty-one oh-one West Forty-first Street, Suite two thousand, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, five-seven-one oh-five. That's where my business is. My residence is in Minnehaha County. Prefer not to put that on the record.
That's fine.
That's okay. I have here.
Thanks, Don. Thank you.
I'll wait up next to you. I'm glad you got the memo on Brown.
Now, I thought it was appropriate, I thought it was appropriate to talk about South Dakota statutes in order to give us all guidance. And I believe that Chapter twenty-one-ten-twenty-eight, which deals with a nuisance, especially a nuisance regarding a sport shooting range, should be discussed with you today. Now, you can see the statutes, twenty-one-ten-twenty-eight through twenty-one-ten-thirty-four are before you. And these statutes were enacted by the legislature in nineteen ninety-nine. And twenty-one-ten-twenty-eight says it's not a nuisance, you cannot be enjoying it as a nuisance if the range is in compliance. And twenty-nine is interesting. It says that the use or operation of a sport shooting range may not be enjoyed as a nuisance by a person who acquires title to real property adversely affected by the normal operation and use of this sporting range, which commenced operation prior to the time the person acquired title. Now, in our case at hand, Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club commenced business in nineteen eighty-one, and it was given a conditional use permit, and it operated for thirty years. Sometime during the last few years, the opponents built a house right in line with the range. Now, what they're doing, they brought this review, which is entirely new procedure that we could not find in the Minnehaha County ordinances, either substantively or procedurally. And the review, in essence, tries to declare the club to be a nuisance. They couldn't do this through state law, so now they're trying to do it through zoning. And you can see that the legislature has addressed this statute this year, and they amended it, and Governor Dugard signed it, and it will be law on July first. And I put that in there because I know that lady here testified. And what this, this house built, one, two, three, four, is, is a compromise. It's a compromise between a shooting club and its neighbors, especially the neighbors who come in after the shooting clubs have been there for thirty years. Now, the changes that are in the statute, they have them underlined there, says, however, if the usage or design of the range results in a significant threat to human life or private habitations, then nuisance is constituted, and an injunction may prescribe appropriate relief. So if you look at the title, it says, on number one, it says, for an act entitled, an act to provide a limited exception to the provisions that exempt sport shooting ranges from the public nuisance laws. So the state law now, which could be enforced through the courts, gives a way that a landowner can bring an action. Now, let's look at the rest of it, second page. It also talks about twenty-one-ten-twenty-nine, says the use or operation of a sport shooting range may not be enjoyed as a nuisance by a person who acquires title to real property adversely affected by the normal operation and use of a sporting range which commenced prior to the time the person acquired title. They didn't change that. It says, except as provided in section one of this act. So, once again, the legislature has looked at this problem. When you have a shooting range, and you've got someone coming in who tries to declare it a nuisance, who knew that the shooting range was there, who knew that it had been operating for a number of years, and yet decided to go ahead in spite of all this and build a home right in line with it. Now, the interesting part is section three, which is new. It says, as used in section one of this act, a significant threat to human life or private habitations exists if shots or ricochets from a sport shooting range not infrequently strike or pass over private property, so on. Now, what does that mean, not infrequently strike? So I went to Webster's Dictionary, and I looked up the word infrequently. Infrequently means seldom occurring or seldom happening. Another word for infrequent is rare. All right. So how many instances or complaints do we have about bullets striking in thirty-two years of operation? One. Maybe two. Thirty-two years, that seemed to be rare, and it certainly isn't not infrequently strike. Now, in this case, we've had a lot of allegations. We've had very little evidence. We have had allegations about hitting this tower that's out there. But if you go look at it, the evidence reveals that the bullets could not have come from the club. Allegations versus evidence. And I think this commission, which is, represents the people of this county, and the several hundred of them are members of Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club, with follow evidence, not allegations. Speculation is not evidence. You can speculate that all these things are going to happen, so on and so forth, and speculate that's not evidence. Every court of law I've ever been in, speculation is objectionable. It's not evidence. Now, it seemed to me, to tell you the truth, that there's been some confusion here. It started out, this whole thing started out as a review, and during this review, which found us to be, the planning and zoning said that they could add conditions to a conditional use. Well, the state's attorney's office said that, agreed with me, said you cannot add conditions to a conditional use. So then, they found that, well, it looks like we got them on, they didn't get a written license or conditional use permit on those tactical ranges, the so-called short-range shooting bays. So now, we got them on that. Now, we'll bring it, this whole thing before you because we got them on that, even though we had permission for eight years to do this. And we had, we were doing shooting back there before they ever came in and moved in right along our range there. And they took subject to that, and they knew about it. Now, okay, so we feel, all right, we have to bring a new conditional use. We listen to you. And we're ready to compromise. We're willing to compromise with you. And for example, I never thought that the club would do this, but it's willing to baffle the one-hundred-yard range if you give us some time to do it. We have to get the money to do it. We don't have it. But right now, if you deny this application for short-range shooting bays, we can shoot at the one-hundred because we have a conditional use that says we can. And it goes all the way back to nineteen eighty-one, eighty-two. And if you, you know, we can have this enforced by the courts. We don't want to. We'd rather compromise with you. And, you know, that's what we'd prefer to do. And we're reasonable. We've had no complaints in all these years, except when someone moved in there and alleged that bullets came from our club. Allegations, not evidence. So I'm not trying to be, take a hard line on you folks. I respect each and every one of you. I know each and every one of you. But I'm just saying that when we stood up and pledged allegiance to the flag, we talked about equal justice for all, and we want our justice as well. And we think that you should agree that we're entitled to those short-range bays, just to ratify what we've already done. And to add a condition to our existing condition, use, that at any time, anybody can make a complaint and drag us in front of the planning and zoning to put more conditions on us is nothing but a waste, would be to any of you. None of you would agree to that in your business. And just like Mr. Haverly said. So I'm asking you to please consider this and to take what Mr. Haverly has put down as a resolution and adopt that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serska. Any questions? Otherwise, we'll go directly to the opponent.
I want to say a couple of questions, if I might, Mr. Chair.
Do you want to do that now or wait till they make the presentation on both sides?
It's up to you.
I think I'd like to hear the presentation on both sides, if you will, before we go to questions, if that's okay.
It's fine.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Kelly Valness, and my family and I live at four-eight-three-two-six, two-hundred-and-sixty Street in Brandon. Thank you for allowing us to speak again today regarding our original complaint of being shot at by the Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club. A very brief recap, in June of two thousand and eleven, our home was shot twice. In May of two thousand and twelve, our son was narrowly missed by a bullet later found by a sheriff's deputy. We filed a complaint, and this issue has been passed back and forth from planning to this commission appeal today. We had previously shown in written, photo, and video proof supporting our complaint. We have letters, petitions, and complaints for your review. We also have a copy of the NRA source book we will reference if needed. As we have presented all this information repeatedly to both commissions, I would just like to move on to specific reasons why we are appealing today. Several things happened during these months. We've been fighting this battle. One important thing was that, as mentioned, there was an amended law that was passed in the state legislature. This amendment was proposed and defended by Representative Scott Eklund, who asked us to testify for those hearings and who is here today to speak on our behalf. You have a copy of that law before you. When we first argued our complaint before the commissions, one of the issues was the vagary of the nuisance law. This law has changed. If you look at the highlighted areas in the papers that we've given you, you will note the reference to threat to human life or private habitations, and if there is a threat in section two, it specifically states as follows. A significant threat to human life or private habitations exists if shots or ricochets from a sport shooting range not infrequently strike or pass over private property which is frequented by persons or where a private habitation exists. A significant threat to human life or habitations continues A significant threat to human life or habitations continues to exist unless or until shooting protocols are altered and enforced, or the shooting range is redesigned so that shots or ricochets no longer strike or pass over private property described in this section." Out of the whole Senate and House, there were only two nay votes on this law. And this was implemented under an emergency provision to be enforced immediately and not July first, and signed by the governor on March twenty-fifth. Understanding that laws do not become retroactive, the legislative intent of this law was very obviously to place strong safety restrictions on all shooting ranges to avoid future tragedy. So combine this with our history of being shot at, the concerns and complaints of our neighbors, and then let's look at the NRA and its view of ranges and safety. You have a copy of the NRA review made by Bruce Plate, as was submitted with the changes by Chuck Heck to the Planning Commission. In this review, Bruce Plate directs the club to enact particular protocols to ensure safety for the surrounding area, and this was prior to our son's shooting incident. The Big Sioux Club and Chuck Heck have rebutted in writing the statements in that report. We called the National Office of the NRA and spoke with Eric White Scarber. He declined to speak on a specific case or issue. What he did say was, "The protocol for an NRA inspection is this: A party contacts the NRA and pays to have an inspection and a recommendation is made. The NRA inspector comes to the property, inspects the grounds, the ranges, speaks with the people who have hired them, does a thorough review, and writes a report. That report, with all its specifics, is then sent to the National Office with a signed affidavit by the inspector as to its truthfulness. Once it is reviewed by the National Office and approved, it becomes a legal document that they would defend in court as true and correct. If a party were to rebut, alter, or change a report after the fact, then that party would be committing, or would be effectively committing perjury." So, if you combine this information and then look at the portion of the most current NRA Range Design Handbook, and note the highlighted of a few important specifics. On item two-point-zero-two-point-one, "Conduct a community survey prior to building." Two-point-zero-two-point-three, "Consider the health and safety and location of your Two-point-zero-four-point-one-point-two, "Property values should be considered, especially where growth is aggressive." Please note, according to the comprehensive plan, the Brandon area was projected in 2015 to have a population at seventy-five-hundred, but in reality, according to the 2011 census, estimates are already at eighty-nine-and-five. Under two-point-zero-six-point-one, "Under final planning and design, hire the necessary professional help, such as consultants, a zoning attorney, engineers, architects, surveyors, and draftsmen to complete your plans." Two-point-zero-six-point-two, "Have detailed plans showing specific dimensions and locations prior to obtaining permits. On the site plans surrounding homes should be located, and intervening distance is highlighted. And as South Dakota has specific building eligibility laws, potential home sites should be included in those highlighted areas." If you will skip to page two-dash-nine-dash-nine, three-point-zero-one-point-four-point-one, "Because of a wide variation in angles of fire, projectile containment must be laid out in half circle or one-hundred-and-eighty degrees, and they mention the use of backstop side rooms with overhead and ground baffles if needed." Everyone we have spoken with or appealed to, from our neighbors, the NRA, and the state officials, come up with the same statement of fact: Money doesn't trump safety. This issue arose after our being shot, and in the course of an investigation, it was discovered that the club had built five tactical ranges illegally and without permit, or site plans, or safety plans, or anything else. Somehow, that is being forgotten, and the original issue of the three ranges has become combined with the five tactical ranges that host weekly live-action shoots with video website evidence of roughly nineteen-thousand bullets being shot every day. We have given you specific rebuttals per line of staff recommendations, but would just like to highlight the most important here. We would ask that you, the commissioners, overturn the Planning Commission decision on those particular five non-permitted ranges, and to listen to the new law, listen to the NRA, and force the Big Sioux Rifle Club to submit in detail and with professional help full plans, safety protocols, areas of projection, and every recommended procedure as outlined in the NRA Range Design Manual for that specific type of range, and to require them to reapply with those requirements fulfilled in order to protect the people in their homes surrounding the Big Sioux Rifle Club. We would not object to the ranges if we were satisfied with the implemented safety measures. We would ask that you uphold the requirement that they must complete the "no blue-sky baffles" on the hundred-yard range before allowing it to be used. I just want to clarify that they're being referred to as "blue-sky baffles," but what they really mean is "no blue-sky." You should not be able to see any blue-sky from any position. We would ask that you uphold the need for a certified range officer on all ranges while shooting is going on, and that they never participate while on duty. We would ask that you uphold the rule their range officer should never leave the range to collect fees or service the clubhouse, and that a different person be on hand for those duties. We would ask that at least an annual written inspection by the planning offices occur and be placed in the file for public inspection, along with an annual certificate of insurance. We and our neighbors are asking for a reasonable expectation of safety now and by our previous petitions. As that expectation has been violated more than once, we do not think it is unreasonable to require a business engaged in lethal entertainment to do business in a manner so as to not go against new state laws that pose a significant threat to human life or private habitations. Ideally, this sort of business would be subject to the same rules and regulations as any other new business, and in accordance with particular sort of business it is. For example, a manufacturing business would have specific licensing, OSHA safety regulations, building and zoning regulations, insurance regulations, permits, variances, and any other number of requirements as they pertain to that particular business. Just as building and safety codes apply to office buildings or apartment complexes, should we not have licensing and building codes that apply specifically to this lethal entertainment industry? Wouldn't it be easier, if you wanted to open a business like that, to be able to come in, be handed a code book and requirements, uniform positions across the board, and not have the random application of conditions under the current permit procedures? That in and of itself would provide for and allow greater opportunity for future clubs without the inconsistency and ambiguity that exists today. Since we do not currently have those codes or laws that would provide universal guidelines at this time, we would ask that you provide us with the protection we need under current statutes and amended law, and require the Big Sioux Rifle Club, who state that they are a sanctioned NRA club, to comply with the recommended NRA requirements and do the job right. With rights comes responsibility, and the responsibility here is to keep us safe. In regards to any questions you may have, any proof that you need on our statements, we have brought a box full of all the supporting evidence that we've had throughout this whole Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Dr. Eklund, are you going to testify?
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Scott Eklund. I am a representative of District Twenty-Five, House of Representatives for the State of South Dakota. My home address, and I'll give it out, four-eight-two-one-seven-Two Hundred and Sixty-Fifth Street in Brandon. I just wanted to make a few points, is all. I'm not going to take very long. You guys have heard plenty on both sides. And I sat in a similar situation and heard people continue to say things over and over when I was in my first legislative session earlier this year, so I understand and appreciate your time. I just wanted to make just a few points from a legislative standpoint. I got elected to the House of Representatives last November, my first term. I've been a physician for thirty years and needed a little bit of a change, and I'll be honest with you, it was quite a change. I tell people, the first two weeks I was in Pierre, I felt like I was drowning. The second two weeks, I started treading a little bit of water. And then the third few weeks after that, I actually made a couple strokes forward. So, I do feel like I'm still just scratching the surface of what it means to be a good legislator. I became familiar with this issue with the shooting range when I heard, had an email from the Valnus family. I had already started working on a law because of another issue in my district. A constituent had contacted me in regards to a private range that was going on. So, the House Bill one-two-three-four that you have a copy of, that's been brought forward, actually was initiated because of another issue, and it was a private range issue with a constituent. And then the Valnuses contacted me when they heard about the law that we were bringing forth. It was interesting that, to me, that there was actually no significant laws that covered people that were getting shot at. And that's the reason that this law was written. It was very concerning to me to bring this law forward, because I'm a hunter. I mean, I've got more guns than most people in this room. I would say, I love guns. I love to shoot my guns, but I always want to be safe when I shoot my guns. And I thought, as a freshman legislator, bringing forth, people didn't know me, didn't know how I feel about things like that, I was concerned that they would think, oh, this guy's a gun-control fanatic, and who elected him in the state of South Dakota? That certainly is not, was not my intent with this law, and that's why this law was written. And when I brought it to the LRC to write the law, I said, "I need this law written as narrow as possible, because I don't want to affect ranges that are operating up to snuff and are following the guidelines that the NRA has proposed, and also our game fishing parks." And I spoke at length with the game fishing parks. They, I don't know if you know this, but they operate over a hundred, and they're involved with, and/or operate over a hundred ranges in our state, and they've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars, probably into the millions, in making those ranges safe. And when I talked with them, they were amazed at the issues that we actually are dealing with right here in the eastern part of the state. So, having said that, I would say that my intent is not to shut any ranges down. My intent is to keep our people safe. And I know that that is an intent that is shared by the range, and I know it's an intent that is shared by you. So, I guess, I wanted to bring to you a little bit of the flavor of the legislature on this issue. As we presented, as the Valnuses came, another family came and testified, there was significant concern about safety, and that's what it was all about, is safety, not gun control, but safety. We want our people to be safe. It flew through the House Committee. We had one vote against it, and he actually changed his vote to be for it on the House floor. So, then we went over to the Senate, and the Senate actually attached or amended it with an emergency clause, because the senators were so concerned of the issue of life and injury of what we were dealing with. And then, by committing it to an emergency clause, that made it need a two-thirds vote from the Senate, and it actually went through the Senate unanimously. And the governor then has signed it. So, it does not take effect July first. It is already in effect because of that emergency clause. So, our state is concerned about safety. We're all here concerned about safety, and that is the intent of this law. So, with that, I'm going to stand down. You've heard enough from both sides, so, thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Any questions for Dr. Eklund? I think what we'd like to do now is to open the floor for questions. I'm sorry, I forgot the rebuttal part. Too much coffee. Please, go ahead and make your rebuttals, and I apologize.
No problem. I'll make it short. We've already remediated the areas where it could conceivably happen, which were the fifty-yard range and the two-hundred-yard range. Reiterate, we did not apply for a review of our existing permits. We applied for a new one. The area around, entirely around this is either existing gravel pit or contemplated to be gravel pit. Concrete Materials has bought this, so in addition to the nuisance that they allege on our range, I'm sure they'll be complaining about the permitting process on the sand and gravel operations that'll be coming up right around their house as well. We've constructed those baffles. There's been absolutely nothing at any time that suggested the short-range bays created any issue. And we constructed those appropriately. We continuously make safety improvements on the range, trying to make it better, because that is our concern. That's why we have a range. We don't have to look over our shoulders, shooting in a ditch or on an abandoned county road somewhere. We have a safe facility. We don't have injuries. And with regard to the actual permitting on our actual application, the county is charged with establishing those conditions which are necessary and appropriate, not listing every other ordinance that might exist on signs, and whether or not we can have a bird avery on the site. It's based on those conditions which are appropriate for the conditional use permit. I don't think that there's anything that's going to satisfy the complainants, because even though we've done those remedial measures, they're still complaining. And I would urge you to adopt the resolution that we provided. We're available for questions.
Commissioner Kelly?
I've got a question.
John, if you wouldn't mind, come back to the mic, please.
No problem.
There's so many conditions out here that I get confused on this thing, but the twenty-six conditions that were laid out by the Planning Commission, you had objections with some of those.
Yeah. If you, at one point, I did a red-line version comparing the various versions. The Planning Commission came up with recommendation number one, and then before the first hearing, they changed their recommendation without giving us notice. They provided it, you know, they've changed their recommendation so many times in the Planning Commission.
No, wait, Planning Commission or Planning Staff?
Planning Staff changed their recommendations three or four times.
But I'm referring to the, what we have in front of us now is twenty-six conditions put on by Planning Commission.
We object to those that relate to our existing permits, that propose to repeal our existing permits, that purport to shut down the hundred-yard range, that impose operational requirements that are completely unreasonable. One range officer can safely take care of the fifty, one-hundred and two-hundred-yard firing line. It's not a big thing to walk back and forth. Anybody that's been out there can see that it's a relatively small area. It's run by volunteers, and anybody that's worked a volunteer organization knows what difficulty it is to get a plethora of volunteers. There's actually no operational condition relative to the five short-range bays. We modified our objection so that if they're, well, I guess, they purport to require a range officer for every shooter, which is completely unreasonable. If you have five people on a shooting line, one range officer can take care of that particular bay without difficulty. And we're willing to have a range officer on each of the active short-range bays that there are active shooters on. But we don't have to have somebody hand-holding every shooter on an actual shooting event, where you might have five people standing next to each other, shooting at targets. Those are some of the principal ones. The biggest one is their ability to impose additional conditions anytime they want to impose additional conditions, which I think is a policy thing that the commission should look at on a comprehensive basis for the zoning ordinance, not letting the Planning Office usurp that ability on an ad hoc basis. I think those are some of the major ones.
Commissioner Kelly?
So, you, first of all, I'm going to point, you know, not many nonprofit organizations are shooting high-powered rifles, so I'm not sure that are volunteer organizations. So, this is a little different animal than most volunteer groups. So, this is a little different animal than most volunteer groups. However, my understanding is they want to repeal the old CUP and, and put this new one in place, which covers, and you're in agreement with most of them, with the exception of 100-yard and the, and the range officers. Do you object to replacing the old?
Absolutely. We, that's as big a one as any. We have a continuous operation under the existing continuous, or conditional use permit since 1981. We don't want there to be the possibility of an argument that, oh, you're operating under a conditional use permit operated, or granted in 2013, and so we bought our house in 2000, or bought our property in 2009, so your range is after ours. And that's, I don't know if it's by intent, but that's one of our concerns.
Can I ask, with, the tactical range was never in that original, original zone, or?
We, probably not all the way back to 81, but prior to the actual construction of these bays, the various shooting competitions that occur on those were staged on the 100-yard and 200-yard range at the, at the far ends of those. So, there, there were, we were getting enough use that it was interfering with the use of the 100 and 200-yard ranges, which is what motivated us to seek to add those ranges, the short-range bays, to accommodate those games and competitions that were already occurring. So, by establishing a dedicated area, that took the pressure off the 100 and 200-yard ranges. So, it wasn't a new use, it was.
You didn't answer my question, though. The tactical was never included in the first.
It was not included in the, it was not in the first application. A rifle and pistol shooting range was in the original application.
But it was subject to the, what you had shown in the original application, correct?
The, the site plan, on the original plan, that's in, as part of the record, it's probably one of the first exhibits on my package, but it showed the three, three ranges drawn in, you know, there's a drawing of what was anticipated. The, when we sought to have those ranges specifically allowed in 2004 or '05, I don't recall which, which year it is offhand, we took a site plan that incorporated those ranges into the existing site plan, and we're told we didn't need to because it was a rifle and pistol before, and it is now. And under the zoning conditional use process, the planning director has the ability to waive that requirement of a, on a site plan. And I guess, and whether or not one is granted, you could never tell from the planning office's records, because they have no records of any request for waivers that they've ever granted or denied. They don't have a system of records. And we have records of when we applied for it, and I guess a neutral fact finder, I think, would find that we, we had adequately established that we had complied with the requirements under the conditional use process.
Well, I don't understand much about law, but it would seem to me there is no written evidence that tactical ranges were ever approved. Is that correct?
There.
Is that correct?
The, the written evidence would be our application. The non-written thing would be the testimony of the actual person that went to the planning office. And if you look at the history of our operations, anytime we wanted to change, we want to change the hours of operation, we wanted to have a relief on the baffle requirement on the 200-yard, we came to the planning people. So, it's more likely than not that we came to the planning people when we came in for, on these tactical ranges, and, or the shorter range shooting bays. So, I guess that's our, that's our position.
Thank you. I've got my questions answered.
Other questions? Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Barr?
You know, I appreciate your willingness to compromise, and I've seen the improvements that you guys have done out there. But I think, you know, the position that you have that these conditions can never be modified, the conditional use permit, if you're in violation of those conditions, though, then, then they can be modified. Do you believe that there has been no violation in the construction of these additional pistol bays, et cetera?
Our site was built in compliance with the site plan that was expressly approved by the commission acting as a board of adjustment. If you approved a building on a farmstead under a conditional use process, and they built another building on the place, you don't make them tear down the first one because they built another building on the farm.
No, but if you built a house and then changed it into a motel, that would be a difference changing the conditions. If you built a barn and then built a 5,000-unit dairy, that would be a change.
Well, the, the 5,000-unit dairy might be a violation of the zoning law, but that doesn't transform the barn into something that it wasn't before. And I, I understand your, what your, your point is, I respectfully disagree with your assertion, though.
If we were then to, you know, close those pistol bays and just leave you on the first three ranges, that would be in compliance with, with the original. That's not what, what you want, and probably not what would be best, but that would be going back to the original.
That, that would be an option that you have. We believe that we, we still have the right to pursue that denial of our conditional use permit through the legal process. Not that, not that that's what we want to do, but that's what the courts are for, to enforce, to preserve the rights and constitutional rights and property rights of people in a neutral basis based on actual admissible evidence.
Mr. Sheriff, I might just continue.
Go ahead.
Two more points. You know, the alleged verbal agreement by the old planning director to give you, allow this, this operation, I don't think is a reasonable assertion. If I was to assure you as a county commissioner that you no longer have to pay your property taxes, don't take that to the bank. Take your money to the Treasury's Department, Treasury's Department, and pay your taxes. I sympathize with the situation, and, you know, I think, I just want to say that I don't believe that's, that's valid.
Commissioner Ibriger?
I just, my question is very short. I just want to make a clarification because I just have lots of questions, I mean, I have lots of notes. And that was, that your request is that we do not repeal the existing permits and that we gratify the verbal permit? Is that where you guys are at?
Well, under the conditions that I set in Exhibit 14 on the submission, we, we don't want the existing permits affected because we didn't apply for that. We applied for a new permit relative to conditional use permit 13012, and we proposed conditions relative to that that are consistent with safe operation of those particular bays. We didn't address our other ones. And there's no authority under the ordinance to do others.
Thank you.
Any other, Commissioner Pekka?
Well, I just wanted to respond to Jeff's question, and I guess I am exactly the opposite of where Jeff is. I think that if you get an answer from a bureaucrat or somebody in a position of authority, any one of our citizens should be able to rely on that statement and actually put that forward as a potential defense. In fact, it's established under case law called entrapment by estoppel, and any one of you can look it up, under, under case law. But, well, without getting too legal on that, I do think that when you talk to anybody in government, you ought to get a straight answer, and I think our citizens ought to be able to rely on that answer. That's why I think we need to be careful with what we say at this particular table to individuals. I guess the question I have is, looking at those particular bays, the tactical bays, that's what you originally made your application for, correct?
Correct.
And so, in looking at the response from zoning and planning, at least from the staff of zoning and planning, they came back with proposals that included changes to the other three long-range bays, correct?
Correct.
And obviously, you don't want any changes to those particular, those particular changes, or those particular firing ranges, correct?
Correct. We've, we've, stay with that answer here.
And so, obviously, as far as your interpretation, we do have the legal authority to consider the short-range tactical bays. And the other long-range bays are quite out of the question, at least that's your position.
Subject to our argument about the planning director actually having the actual authority as opposed to apparent authority or ostensible authority, there's actual authority under the zoning ordinance, which we reserve the rights to. You do have, subject to that, you do have the ability to make appropriate conditions relative to that based on our application for a new permit.
Now, now, setting aside the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can I ask another question?
Go right ahead.
Setting aside the tactical bays, you are willing to at least to put in the blue-sky baffles on the 100, 100-yard range?
That's something that.
Give you some time?
We need some time on it. We need to operate that in the meantime. That's one of the principal areas where people that are sighting in their deer rifles will show up in the fall. That's one of our significant revenue sources. So, and it, it doesn't line up, if you look at the bigger maps, and you all have those. It doesn't line up with their property, and you would have to be intentionally shooting over those berms on the side in a manner that would be a criminal act rather than, than a misadventure. And we, we don't perceive that there's any risk on that 100-yard range. It's, it's a huge baffle, or a huge berm on the backside of that. The, the scale of the picture doesn't really show it. Those, those target frames are about this big compared to that, are six feet tall. So, I mean, there's, you have to have significant elevation in order to have an issue of going straight off the back and off to the side in the absence of an intentional act that could happen on the, on the street, on the road, on the driveway to the farm next to us. There's really no issue.
Any other questions for, from the commission? Absolutely, Mr. Pekka.
The fact that the state of South Dakota implemented this new emergency procedure, and it looks like one of the lines that were underscored saying, however, if the usage or design of a range, design, that obviously is one of the reasons why you'd probably consider putting the, the baffles on the 100 yards range.
Well, we have always sought safety. I mean, that's.
Right.
And as an accommodation to the neighbors and to, you know, progressively make the range more safe, we would do the baffles if we have a reasonable time without the closure. We don't think it can be commanded, but we're willing to do that just because we want to make things safe. For example, on the 50-yard range, in addition to the baffling, we've added some additional smaller sand areas to further absorb projectiles, even though that wasn't something that was contemplated, just because we don't want any issues. We've changed the lighting for ceasefires. Everything that we're, we work towards is to make it safe.
Thank you, Mr. Hare.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if you don't have questions, I still would chat on.
Correct.
Do you have some?
No, I'll wait till the end.
Well, I just, I certainly see why changing some of the 29 or whatever it is items would be of interest. And I know that we all want this to be as safe as possible. I, I guess that maybe if I could ask a question of Mr. Heck, who didn't testify, what range, or what distance to the target, distance to the berm are people shooting at on those pistol bays? Because obviously, you know, I looked at them from the, you know, the entrance. I didn't walk up by the berm. Are they shooting at 10 yards, or 5 yards, or 35 yards?
Okay. My name's Charles Heck, president of Big Street Rifle and Pistol Club, 1608 South Glendale. That varies all the way from 5 yards back to probably 25 yards.
That's pretty short range, really.
It is pretty short range. I would doubt that 90% of the shots are probably within 20 yards of those, and most of them is, because they might shoot at targets here and then move to this side of the, the bays and shoot at targets here. I've witnessed instructional classes where they shoot at 25 meters with 22s, and the actual pistol shooting is always much shorter than that. The instructional classes, there's kind of a theory out there nowadays that if you need a firearm for self-defense, it's going to be, happen fast, happen in the dark, and be up close. So, that's mostly what the training is all comprised of.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
You know, on the existing baffles that you've put in on, on the ranges, there are some bullet holes in them that are just a couple of yards away from the firing line, so.
The blue-sky baffles?
Yeah.
Yeah. When we were like brand new, what, what happened was that people used to carry the, the target frames from the 200, which are relatively tall, over to the pistol bays, which is how we normally operated. They got into that habit. But however, those frames were too high and too close. They were right underneath the blue-sky baffles. And some people, once their target gets full of holes, they don't necessarily know where they're hitting. That's about the only explanation I can give to the holes in the blue-sky baffles. But that area is going to get painted so that they'll become more obvious to shooters and the range officer. We, we've already completed putting new plastic sleeves in the ground where we mount these targets so that the targets from the 200 don't match up with those holes. So, you can't use those. They won't stand there. So, we've made new frames that are lower. So, like the 10-yard range, all those bullets will be going down and impacting the new sand berm that's on the ground. And the, the targets at 25 are also new frames at more appropriate heights to keep the fire, firing down onto the sand berms and not up into the blue-sky baffles, or not, no blue-sky baffles.
I've, I've gotten a number of emails from folks that shoot on those pistol bays talking about safety and stuff. Would I be safe standing on top of a berm during a shoot on, at a pistol bay?
I would have to say. He would stand out there. I would stand out there, but my concern is, you know.
It's not prudent.
The bullets pick up rocks.
It's not prudent to stand there, yeah.
It's not prudent. We wouldn't allow you to stand up there because of our desire for safety.
Sure.
You know?
Thank you.
Matter of fact, the one instance where we've had report that someone was up there, it was the shooter who would not fire when that person could be seen there.
Oh, that was Mr. Jones over there?
Mr. Jones.
Yeah.
Mr. Jones, if you want to speak, you need to come up to the mic, please.
If, if I can just clarify, I didn't say that he was on the berm.
Sure.
He could be seen up there because he stated that he could see down into us. The shooter did see him.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're, you're welcome. Mr. Jones, do you want to say something? I didn't want to cut you off, but we also have duplicate conversations going on.
Yeah, I'm Keith Jones. I live at 25968 483rd Avenue in Brandon. I live just west of the existing range. I was right above Bay 4. I was about 30 feet on our property. They were shooting in Bay 1, which is shooting away from me, and I was sitting on my four-wheeler. I'd never got off, and they had the two range officers come over and tell me that I had to leave because I might get hit with a ricochet. I mean, they're, they're shooting southeast, and I'm northwest of them. If it's so safe, then why did I have to leave off our own property? I mean, that, that don't make sense to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Somebody got to say.
Other questions? What I would like to do is ask our. What I would like to do is ask our state's attorney to make some comments about our legal responsibilities and choices, if you would. So, Kirsten, if you would, give us some comments.
All right, thank, thank you. I, I guess, you know, I want, I'm just going to give you a legal perspective on what I feel the issues are at this point. I'm basically going to make a recommendation, obviously it's up to you, in light of how I see the legal issues playing out, obviously it's up to you, but I'll just give you some of my concerns and why that recommendation that I would make legally, at least to the legal issues, applies here. I've listened to everybody's presentations many times, I've been at all of these meetings, I reviewed everyone's submissions that you've given, and, you know, did my own research, given it a lot of considerations. And I guess, from listening to the presentations today, I think it's fair to say that the Big Sioux Gun Range indicates that it doesn't view its prior permits as being superseded in any way, no matter what action you take on this conditional use permit. I'm hearing that they want them to be subsumed, in other words, the 1981 permits prior to this. And I guess that leaves open the possibility that they view that their conduct need not be governed exclusively by this new permit if it is adopted. And without that agreement here, I guess, I think there's a significant legal question as to whether this new conditional use permit is effective. They've mentioned some issues with the procedural steps that have been taken that I think is a concern. This new conditional use permit was submitted on December 28th, I believe, of 2012, the one that's before you today. I know there's been some citation with the old conditional use permit ordinance that allows consideration of a revocation or an upholding versus this new conditional use ordinance permit that allows for these modifications and reviews that have been talked about today. The new ordinance allows for that revision and modification, the old doesn't. The old requires consideration of the revocation only, and that's only if it, there's a finding made that the conditional use permit currently sitting has been violated. So, I guess, in light of all those statements and all the submissions today, my legal recommendation, without of concern with all these different conditions being out there and the legal authority which should adopt them, kind of being up in the air frankly, I would recommend today that you deny this conditional use permit in its entirety, actually. Send the matter back to the Planning and Zoning Commission on the original permits, with the instruction to determine whether the original permits were violated, because I believe the old ordinance still governs this question. And only if there's a violation of the old ordinance can the Planning and Zoning Commission either elect to uphold it, or they can completely revoke it. And that's, I guess, where I see the legal authority at this point. I know that a lot of parties have put in a lot of work on this, I know Planning and Zoning staff has done a lot on this, but the statements made today, and looking at the ordinances and the timing in which all these applications were brought in relation to when these ordinances were adopted, I, I think that's the appropriate legal posture here. I, all I'm hearing is that there's not an agreement here that this new conditional use permit governs, even if it's adopted today. So, that's what I'd recommend.
I should have asked for the Reader's Digest version, sorry.
I wanted to explain why.
Mr. Chair?
I understand.
I have a question to Kirsten.
Commissioner Kelly?
Kirsten, if, if, you went, you attended almost all the meetings, I think.
Correct.
Wasn't what's presented before us today, compilation and a compromise? And then, I guess, somebody had to try and put it into a form, which Planning Commission did. But seemed to me to be a compromise of a lot of the problems, and then get rid of the old one was their intent, planning attempt, at least intent to get rid of the old one and to replace it with this one. And all parties were involved in most of these discussions, as I understand. There are some exceptions in there, and I might point, just for instance, if we adopted this, the one about the range officers at each range, they could come back in and apply for a waiver on that condition later on if they, if, if it was really affecting them too much. The thing, if we go back to the original, in my mind, those tactical ranges are not legal. And obviously, that's for lawyers to make that decision, but I just, I, am I correct in thinking, though, that this was somewhat of a compromise of all, all the positions? Not everybody is happy with the compromise. I'm sure the proponents are not happy with it, as they stated, and the opponents have some problems with it also, but that doesn't mean each side only wins their side. I mean, that's what the purpose of the compromise is. Am I right there?
I believe this was put together as a compromised position in reviewing our ordinances and the timing of the adoption of these applications, and the remedy in the old ordinance that I believe applies, at this point, I think the only option for a Planning and Zoning Commission is upholding it, or, in their discretion, if they find the old permit was violated, completely revoking the conditional use permit.
But can they also, I mean, can they interpret the old one as saying the tacticals are not approved?
In, in my opinion, and I know Commissioner Peckus has expressed a legal opinion on this, I think there's a factual dispute as to whether that approval was ever given. And I also think depending on what that factual finding is, whether that oral representation is effective, is actually a question of law, too, based on whatever fact finding there is. So, I guess, possibly, I guess, would be my answer.
Mr. Chairman? I recognize Pat's up there, but I'd like to say a couple of things.
I just wanted a little bit clarification from Kirsten, I'm not questioning what he's saying, I just, so that I can explain it to the Planning Commission as well.
Let's just wait a second until we get done going through another process here. Commissioner Barth?
Well, being on the Planning Commission, I don't want it to come back. At the same time, I think that Mr. Haverly did propose some quite different conditional use things during the last Planning Commission. I don't know that we really compromised that many of them. I do think that there's room to change a couple of these to make it more palatable. And I think that whatever happens, if, if the range continues to operate, it'll probably be one of the safest ranges in the country. But I, I think we should try to make the tweaks to this that, that we could live with, and that means for the neighbors as well. And then, and then let them go into operation for their shooting season. Sorry.
We'll try to explain this to a little, if you, do you want to do that now, or you want to do it?
I can address any question, sure.
Sure, and I think, you know, just to help everybody in the audience, so if you're recommending denial today, which would essentially kill this conditional use permit that we have before you, so it would be left with the two original conditional use permits?
Correct.
Standing, which would then mean the tactical bays, which were not part of those original permits, would not be in operation?
That's based on the written records that we have?
Correct, the written record, which-
Now, whether there's an argument is-
And I can say, I guess now the honorable, Mr. Swanson had me call Dave Queal and ask him about that, and he did say for the record that he had no knowledge of giving them approval of that. And they said it's the planning director, whether it was assistant director at the time, I don't know, but. And so then we'd be starting over with the two original conditional use permits, whether they had violation of those permits?
Correct.
And at that point, we would be under the old ordinance or the new ordinance?
The old ordinance, I believe.
Even though we're starting over?
Based on the state of the ordinance at the time, the original permits were enacted, I do believe that the Big Sioux gun proponents have some basis of argument in statute that that ordinance would continue to apply. Also, the fact of the matter is, is that the original permits, the appeal process that was engaged in during consideration of those original permits, when it came to the full commission and then back-
The first time, yeah.
The old ordinance was still in effect, and I believe it still applies. That allows for upholding it or complete revocation.
And that's because the process started under the old ordinance.
Correct.
Perfect, thank you, you cleared it up.
But that's only if you-
Yes.
-deny this, and that, that is up to you. I will caution that, I think the legal issues are very complex if we adopt another conditional use permit on top of the other ones, and there's some confusion and lack of clarity as to what particular conditions continue to apply or revoked, whatever. I think there's some questions out there about that, so.
Thank you, Kirsten. Other comments, questions? What, Commissioner Barth?
I'd ask Mrs. Ballness if there's any conditions that she would change of the 26 proposed, and any that need to be added or whatever.
First, I'd just like to clarify that, you know, we did follow building eligibility laws when we built this house. We filed complaints only after we were shot at, and I do, you know, I am a little offended by being made the bad guy here when, when we were the victims of the shooting. In regards to the specific, the specifics of this, I, you know, I agree with what you're saying on the law. I agree that the old ordinance applies because this happened then, and the new law is really just a, an intent for the future. What I, what I would like to say is that when we last left you to go back to the Planning Commission, the way I had understood it at that time, was that there were two options presented then, was that either their entire permit would be revoked, or they could voluntarily come forth and reapply, they could voluntarily reapply. That was the way we understood it when we left here. When we spoke to the Planning Commission about it, when we spoke, you know, Kirsten was there as well, we were upset because the two issues had been combined, because we had understood that not only would the, if they weren't willing to make concessions to the Planning Commission's ideas first time around, if, then the, then their permit would be revoked, so that they would be allowed to, under law, make those changes in the conditional use permit for the first three ranges. For the five additional ranges, my understanding originally was that that was a separate issue. That was a separate issue, a separate application that was supposed to come forth to the Planning Commission at an entirely different time. When we, when we brought these issues forth to the planning offices and with Kirsten there, we were told at that time that this reapplication by the gun club, this presentation to the Planning Commission this last time, was their compliance in avoidance of the revocation, and they were combining the two together to make that happen all in one fell swoop. So, I understand what you're saying, and I understand what you're saying, but what, what I'm seeing is that, that revocation should have occurred, the application should have been reapplied both, both for the, the three ranges, which I, I feel we have proven there's been violations in record, there's been admitted violations, and the second application should be separate for the five tactical ranges, and they should both be treated as new, as new applications.
Again, if, if, just a minute, Jeff, I think, if we would have Kirsten respond to that first.
If I can just address that, and I understand that was how it was presented at this point. I guess, what I'm hearing today from the presentations of the parties is this consolidated permit is not agreed, that it's taking the place of anything from the parties. And because of that, I think, if they've voluntarily elected not to, not to consider it on that basis, we follow what the old ordinance says to the letter. Because I'm, what I'm concerned about is, frankly, appeals from this body about there being confusion about what was consented to and what wasn't. That is why I'm making this recommendation, to keep the record as clean as possible, and, and just consider it based on the text of the old ordinance, instead of these superseding or subsuming permits that are now being considered by this body. And I, I understand what you're, what you're saying, I guess that's my concern at this point.
No, and I understand your concerns, too. It was just, it was, it was presumed by us and explained to us that, and I thought explained to them, that they had a certain amount of time when it went back to Planning Commission, that Planning Commission would either revoke their entire permit, forcing them to reapply, and opening up the door to the change in the amendments under law, or they could come in and supersede that by making this application to change their own permit. So, by making the application to change, whether, whether, those are the changes that they wanted or not, by opening the door, by making that application to stop the revocation of their permit, they opened the door to those changes, they made the application for those changes. And to me, that's what was presented the last time we were here, those were the two options.
And I understand, Chair, pardon me, and I understand the perception that they're opening the door, however, everything today has been prefaced with, we are not waiving our rights under the law, and I understand that position, and in light of that, I can't, in my legal, this is just my legal opinion, view that as any sort of superseding application that knocks out any of those other remedies under the old permit, or the complaints about whether procedure hasn't been followed. So, that's where I am, I guess.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
So, my original question, though, was, of the 26 conditions that have been put forward, do you agree with them, or are there other things that should be put as conditions?
I think for the most part, we agreed with them. Our primary concern at this point is the five tactical ranges, simply because I feel like they were sort of slid in the back door, and there really are no, the tactical ranges are a whole different breed, you know? This is not just standard shooting target practice, these are running and dodging and jumping and climbing while you're shooting a gun, and any sorts of guns. And so, if you look at that area, the only, the only protections that they have in place are these 10-foot berms. Well, it doesn't take, you know, just a little bit of a jerk, and you're over that berm and on somebody's land. And it's not just us, you know? They, they mentioned the gravel pit, well, we have a letter that's been presented to you several times from the gravel pit backing us because they're concerned for their employees. Keith Jones is one of their employees who lives right there. Historically, you have other people who live close to the ranges, Eichley's is one in particular.
So, is there another condition that you'd like to see on those pistol ranges?
I would, well, as I said in my statement, I feel like those ranges, with the sort of activity, activities that are occurring there, need to be presented and applied for with, with real architectural and engineering drawings, with, you know, using everything that's known about safety protocols to, to make them idiot-proof, essentially, because you're not even just standing there. Somebody's running along, shooting a gun, if there's not a baffle, if there's not, you know, other, the NRA Gun Club book just has, they have solutions for every possible scenario that they recommended in this book, whether it's for tactical ranges, you know, just, just target practices, whatever it might be, location, location of your neighbors, how close your whole, the whole neighborhood is to you. If they could, if they could get a design, an approved design, a real blueprint, not just a drawing, or just, you know, a global map like this, a real design that says, this, this is what we're doing, and this is how we're going to protect you. And not just protect us, protect everyone around them, then we would be comfortable with that.
Thank you.
One question I have, Kelly, if I might, if everybody else is done with questions, is the alleged bullet that came from the, from the gun range that almost hit your son, do you think that came from the tactical- do you think that came from the tactical range, or the 100, 250-yard range with the baffles?
I don't know that, I don't know that I can comment here, no.
Okay. So, you're not sure where it came?
We've, we've never been allowed to see the police reports. I mean, the police officer spoke to us, they spoke to them. There is a police report, there is the bullet, there is all those things. And anything I, I would say would just be a guess.
Speculation, okay, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Finally, I guess, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask maybe Mr. Heberly or Sertzka if there are conditions that they would change or want to add, and which ones they are. I know that they've mentioned number four, number eight. If you don't mind.
Mr. Sertzka or Mr. Heberly, would you like to address that question?
First of all, we object to any that purport to modify the operational or construction requirements on the 100, 250-yard ranges. There's no authority to modify those, so we object to those generally. Trying to find the.
Oh, number four is the range officer shall be present for, on each active firing line at all times. Range officer shall be present with each active shooter.
Jeff, I think we need to let them answer the question.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just thought he was looking for the text, and.
Unfortunately, I, oh.
If you'd like a copy of it, I got tons of paper.
I think I have it here, the February 25th. Agree with number one. We agree with number two. As modified by the, the one that I wrote up, I agree with number three. Number four, as modified so that it requires a range officer on the short-range bays for each bay that's active, we agree with that. As it relates to the 50, 100, and 200, we're willing to have a separate range officer for the combination of those three. We disagree with number seven, which is the baffles on the 100 unless we're given the permission to have the range, unless the range remains open, and we're given a reasonable time to put that up. I guess that's seven, eight, and nine. Ten, if you look at my proposed resolution, I really debated about that, but if there's a conclusive proof that a bullet escapes those ranges, we're willing to look at additional conditions, baffling or safety conditions relative to the short ones. Number 11, those 10-foot berms have existed for the entire time that the short-range bays have been used, so we don't object to that. Twelve, thirteen, we agree to having the same operational days that we have on the existing permits. Fourteen, based on the sunset, or 8:00 AM to sunset, we couldn't shoot in the dark anyway, and we're fine with that. Number fifteen, given the fact that the planning people took it upon themselves to do a review and impose additional conditions without any authority, we object to number fifteen. Number sixteen, the towers, they couldn't have been hit from our range, looking at the holes that I was able to see over the weekend. It was more likely from the property of the south or the west that impacted those properties, and their shooting that occurs on those. And I guess there's at least an informal shooting range on the property of the west that is not permitted. Number, and, and, so therefore, we object to that. We also object to something that applies to something that we ordinarily wouldn't do, like we won't crash any airplanes into the Twin Towers in New York City either. We agree, we're agreeable to number seventeen, and that's included in one of the conditions that I had in my proposed resolution, that, as modified, that make it more clear. We have gates, and we're more than happy to use those. Number eighteen, we're willing to keep our stuff inside. Number nineteen, we have a restroom. Number twenty, we're agreeable to that. The lighting, we've got a yard light out there, like a farm yard light, and I think that's, this is just surplus. I don't think the planning people add any value by just layering on existing rules and regulations that exist independent of the conditional use process. The conditional use process provides that, conditions that are necessary and helpful. And not already in the ordinance, or, or conditions that should be applied, not recitation of all the ordinances that Minnetonka County has. So, we've got sort of a problem with that. Parking, same thing, twenty-two. Twenty-three, that's in one of my proposed conditions, we're gonna have any wrecked cars out there. Twenty-four, twenty-five goes back to conditions that are already required under existing ordinances or just surplus. Twenty-six, we expressly and vehemently oppose that one, because we don't want our existing permits revoked, or repealed, or whatever language that the planning commission came up with that's not found in the ordinance that is their authorizing condition. And it also, it protects us under the pre-existing use under the state law. So, I guess that, one to twenty-six. And I guess I would urge you to grant our conditional use permit under conditions that are reasonable and appropriate, as indicated in my proposed resolution, and we really don't want to go back on another remand. In the event that you choose to deny the permit, we want to have, take it to a neutral fact-finder that will apply the law.
Thank you, John. As I, and I'm gonna try to summarize what you just said, but you're suggesting that, I think, if I can reiterate, that seven, eight, and nine you agree to if you are given reasonable time. Correct?
We'll build the 100-yard baffle, Mr. Heberly, we've got the time to do it, if you, if we can compromise and agree on it.
Thank you.
We're willing to do that, but we spent all our money. This is, for the record, this is Don Sertzka. We spent all our money doing the remedial measures already, and, you know, we need to make more money in order to finish the project, which we want to do.
Well, I hate to destroy your career, but we don't want to spend a lot of money on legal fees either. So, the issue is, is I'd love to get this at least partially completed today, regardless of what other attorneys have to say.
Just for the record, Mr. Heberly and I are doing this pro forma.
Awesome.
We appreciate to put this public, and for the Ken from Minnetonka County.
Thank you. I'm glad you're doing that, but we also have some investment here. And then fifteen, sixteen, twenty-one, and twenty-six, you're basically wanting to eliminate those four, correct? Fifteen, sixteen, twenty-one, and twenty-six.
That was my notes.
Yeah.
Is that what you heard?
I guess also, you say twenty-five, twenty-four and twenty-five. I mean, there's existing requirements under the zoning and law that we have to apply, or have to comply with, whether or not we're applying for a conditional use. Just layering on a bunch of additional things doesn't add any value to the process, just leaves some potential traps.
Mr. Chair, we need to be at the microphone for.
Correct. I thought we had consensus. I jumped to a conclusion. I think we understand then that you're talking about, again, reasonable time on seven, eight, and nine. Fifteen, sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-four, and twenty-five, and twenty-six you would like to eliminate.
Yes. I think there's surplusage, and don't add any value to the process, like I said, just leave a trap for the unwary. We're certainly trying to be wary, but we don't think it adds any value.
Thank you. Other comments? Absolutely.
Sorry, Kelly Ballness again. So, just to clarify, like, number fifteen, they, they don't think that safety inspections and/or safety precautions should be required if the public's health and safety are threatened? They're asking to have that removed, because somehow it will, I don't know, impede future progress? I manage apartment complexes.
Let's try to keep it short and to the point.
Okay.
Because we've hashed this and rehashed it. Sorry about that.
Well, I guess what I'm hearing is that, what I'm hearing them say is that unless, they will agree to do everything on their three ranges if you approve the five bays.
What they're suggesting, and if I, I think I have this right, is that if we give them reasonable time on seven, eight, and nine, excuse me, and eliminate fifteen, sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, that that is their proposal at this point. And you're saying you don't agree with fifteen?
Well, I think fifteen should stay.
Okay, any others that you feel that way?
I feel that, again, you know, I'll go back to the position where money doesn't trump safety, and understandably, you know, time is needed to install things, and they can argue that it costs money to do that, but they also, they're, they are a nonprofit club, so they are eligible for grants to do that, including through the NRA, and also other people take out loans.
We just need to stick to the items.
Okay.
Which other items do you want to not be part of the, quote, compromise, maybe? So far, we have fifteen you don't agree with.
Okay, so let me look. I'm just gonna go down them like they did, I guess. Number one, we don't have a problem with the three ranges.
They agree with everything except these exceptions, so let's not redo that. I'm sorry, but we've already redone that. How about seven, eight, and nine? Do you agree with that with a reasonable timeframe?
I, I, I do not agree with that. I think that the Blue Sky Baffles should be built on the 100-yard range.
Immediately?
Immediately, or it should not be used in the meantime.
Okay, so you don't agree with seven, eight, and nine?
I do not agree with that one.
How about fifteen, that one you didn't agree with? How about sixteen?
Sixteen.
Six, yeah, sixteen, I'm sorry. Fifteen, we've already talked about.
Sixteen, I agree with.
Okay.
Why would that not make sense? Seventeen, is that one of them?
Oh, yeah, no. Twenty-one is the next one that.
Twenty-one. We agree with that one.
You agree that it's okay to compromise those, correct? Or you agree that you don't want it?
Okay. Twenty-one is just about lighting.
Okay, so you agree with that?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you. And then we go to twenty-four.
Twenty-four. We would, we would agree with number twenty-four.
Okay, thank you. Twenty-five?
Well, we agree with that, but we, I mean, it's just, we'll agree with the compromising that.
Okay, thank you.
It's just irrelevant.
Now, we're back to twenty-six.
And we agree with this one.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I'm confused on what, are you agreeing with the written, or are you agreeing with the suit?
Yeah, I know that's confused.
Huh?
On, on.
Or with the, with the clubs?
On number twenty-six, we are agreeing with the recommendations by the planning commission.
Okay, so when you were saying agree, you agreed to what we're reading right here on the document.
For number twenty-six specifically.
Okay.
For, for like twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, the ones that are, you know, signage and parking and all of those things that would be irrelevant to safety, we're agreeing with their compromise.
Okay.
No, I'm confused.
Oh, yeah.
To be blunt, I think we were talking about, they had said to eliminate those.
Right.
So, to eliminate fifteen, sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
Okay, fifteen, we would like to keep.
Okay. Yeah, we need to have the same list, because I think you might have been looking at a different list.
You're on the staff report list, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think I was looking at that one, too, so.
So.
Could we put that on the Elmo, maybe?
Can, if you want. It's the one that we got from the planning and zoning group.
Okay. So, we're gonna start with fifteen again?
Fifteen is the one that you indicated that you did not agree with.
Well, we agree with the planning commission.
You did not agree with the compromise?
We do not agree with the compromise.
There we go. Now, we're getting that right. Sixteen, you agree with the compromise of eliminating it?
No, we agree with the planning commission on sixteen.
Okay, how about twenty-one?
We agree with the compromise.
Okay. Twenty-four.
We agree with the planning commission.
Twenty-five?
We agree with the compromise.
Okay, and last one is twenty-six.
We agree with the planning commission.
Okay, and seven, eight, and nine you agree with, with a reasonable timeframe, or not?
Mr. Chair, I think seven, eight, and nine are.
Seven, eight, and nine, we, we would like to go with the planning commission on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Just reading one, one last one on the required schedule by March one, obviously it's impossible at this point to even comply with a March one thing, and I think it's unreasonable to expect that we have our, our whole year planned at that point.
That was number thirteen.
Thirteen, yeah.
Pat Harmon with the planning department, and I just want to make sure that when you're looking at these commissioners, that you did understand that number eight, the planning commission had said they were not supposed to use the 100-yard range until they put the baffles up, so I just wanted you to be aware that was in there if you're, if you're gonna remove it. I just didn't want there to be confusion on that. And the only thing that, that we are questioning is the number six on the combining, on the different conditional use permits. We're a little confused now how we are going to enforce what's been rewritten and still have the other conditional use of permits on the record. And I do understand what John said about concern that we wouldn't recognize that this was out there since 81, but that still stands that it's been there since 81. I mean, there's no question on that point of it. But I'm just trying to make it worse for you.
You are.
You know?
You've done a good job.
I mean, I, I understand the operational ones, and some of those were put in there just to point out that, hey, you need to be aware, because you didn't get a, a building permit for one of the buildings and stuff, but those will still be enforced one way or the other, that's fine, so.
Okay, I understand.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kelly?
Does, does not twenty, does twenty-six repeal the previous one?
Yes. It basically repeals and combines everything into this new permit.
So, the confusion would not exist if, if we adopted as it's written right now?
We would be under one.
That repeals the old one and institutes a new one.
We'd be under one operating conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Which is the one before you.
Commissioner Peters? But as Kirsten indicated, that probably wouldn't survive judicial scrutiny.
That's kind of what I heard, too. Well, I think we've had enough testimony.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
Getting to a point where everybody is probably as confused as they could possibly be at this point. Kirsten, do you have any other legal comments before we move ahead?
I think I said more than the Reader's Digest version last time, so.
I think I said more than the Reader Statist version last time, so...
Thank you. Now, I would entertain a motion.
Motion?
Commissioner Kelly?
To approve the conditional use permit as submitted by the Planning Commission.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second to approve? Motion dies for a lack of a second. Do we have any other motions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Peckus?
I'll take a stab at a motion. I'm going to make a motion to approve the request on the short-range firing bays as the application was submitted by the Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club, with the exceptions of what they pointed out with seven, eight, and nine, I believe also 13, 15, 16, 21, 24, 25, and 26 being eliminated for clarity of the record. I also am going to make a motion that...
Who am I? You can't make two motions.
It's the same motion.
It's part of the same motion.
Just same motion.
Okay, thank you.
Dick, don't get us confused.
I also want to make sure that the 100-yard rifle range does stay closed until the baffles are put up. I know that's referenced already, but I want it to be in the motion for clarity.
Okay.
And I also want to include, as part of this motion, that the other previous conditional use permits are not affected by the approval of the tactical range, for clarity of the record. I also want to recognize in the motion that there is a new state statute that specifically governs usage and design, which does potentially affect the Big Sioux gun and rifle range, depending on how this new statute is going to be applied. That's my motion.
There's no way in heck I can try to repeat that, but I'm going to try, or I'll have Cindy try.
Well, I think you can, Gerald.
Thanks. John, I want to make sure I've got the right numbers here, because I can't...
Right, I've got it.
Okay.
I took a stab at it.
Seven, eight, and nine, 13, 15, 16, 21, 24, 25, and 26 will be eliminated. The baffles will remain closed until they...
100 yards.
Or the ranges will remain closed until the baffles are installed.
On the 100 yards.
On the 100 yards. All previous permits will stay in effect, and that we will recognize state statutes.
They're cautioned that they have to recognize.
Yep, as cautioned.
Usage, design, potentially subjects the Big Sioux Rifle and Pistol Club to an injunction.
Okay. I think we have it, but I need a second.
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner?
Sorry, go ahead. I'll...
Commissioner Kelly?
I have a question of John. You're taking out seven, eight, and nine, and yet you're saying, "But we want to have seven is the baffles on the 100-yard range."
Right.
Eight is the range will remain closed. So, we don't want to eliminate those, do we?
No, I just brought emphasis to it. That's all. On seven, eight, and nine, those were eliminated, but they also said that they'd be willing to put up baffles on the 100 yards. You heard what they said at the podium?
I'm just looking at what's written down. It's the only thing I can make any sense of. All right, you answer my question.
Commissioner Barth?
Well, I guess that was my question, too, is, you know, if... Are we going to have the 100-yard range closed until the baffles are installed? Are we going to install those baffles?
My motion was that it would stay closed until they install the baffles.
Okay.
So... On the 100-yard range.
Right. So, isn't that the same as leaving seven, eight in there?
They asked for it to be removed, but at the podium, they said that they'd be willing to do that, but the issue was money at this point. I believe they also said 2015, but I didn't raise that date in my motion.
Any other questions for John? Any other questions on the motion? Commissioner Hyberger?
Just a comment, and, you know, just, I don't think that the stray bullets came from the 100 yard, and I think that that has been told to us, and then to tell them that they have to have the baffles up when they... When there was no incident on that, I think kind of goes against what their original intent or the original planning and zoning were, that there haven't been anything... Any problems on the 100 yard, and so I have a problem with that particular one thing. They've offered to put them up. No one else is coming forward with money from them. None of the neighbors have said, "We'll help you put money towards these baffles that we won't put up." And so, that's the one thing I have a problem with, with everything you just said.
May I respond?
Commissioner Peckus?
You're absolutely right, and I wouldn't normally put that in there, other than the fact that they said they were going to try to do it, and they actually gave a date of 2015. But the real cause and concern is that they talk about usage and design of this range would constitute an injunction now under state law with this emergency application.
Okay.
And I have no doubt that the parties here, if we approve this, they're going to wind up in court.
Okay.
If they put up the baffles, they're now designing it to be in compliance with 211028, which is what is out there. And I just want to make it very easy for all the parties, including the court, to look at this thing and saying, "They've done what they need to do to try to make it safe." That's all.
Thanks, John.
Other questions? Commissioner Kelly?
I have a substitute motion to table a request.
We have a motion to table a request? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for a lack of a second. We're back to the original amended motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, John, I understand your concern on the 100-yard range. At the same time, seems to me that the bar method plus the increased scrutiny that safety is going to be having at the gun range means that they could operate it safely. I don't think they would let me out there sighting in my rifle without supervision until I'd already proven myself on the 200 or something. And I think that it could operate safely. I think with the concerns that have been brought up, that I suspect that they will be severely toeing the line on every safety aspect that they can conceive of. And so, I think that potentially, there is room to allow them to continue to operate that until they can expeditiously install the baffles on that.
Other questions? Commissioner Peckus?
Well, I just want to be very clear that there's nothing in the prior conditional use permits that require any baffles on any one of these long-range rifle ranges.
That's true.
And the fact that they erected them gratis on their part, but exhausting all their funds, was an attempt on their part to try to remediate, at least from what we heard today, remediate the potential dangers. And so, I want to acknowledge that, but what I also want to understand is that, at the podium today, they indicated that they're going to try to erect those baffles on the 100-yard range, and I want to make it clear in the record that they undertook that potential compromise position, because right now, if we look at those previous conditional use permits, nothing requires those baffles to be on there. And so, I just want to make that part of the motion. Now, reality is that I do believe that this is most likely going to court, and I do think that I want to make it very easy for our council, as well as for the court and the parties involved, that there was this potential compromise position. If they don't want to put baffles on their 100 yards, I think if you look at their old conditional use permits, which are still operating, they don't have to. And so, the question's going to be whether or not the court's going to look at 211028 and say, "The design of that range and the usage, according to the judge's interpretation, is going to require them to put up baffles." And I think that we could save a whole lot of money and a whole lot of court time if we just said that what they said here is that they're going to put up baffles there. That's what they said at the podium today. So, I'm not making it part of that conditional use permit.
Other questions or comments?
Well, before we go to...
Commissioner Kelly?
I'm not going to support the motion. I think we're just kind of... We might as well be back to the original conditional use permit and let the thing be resolved on the shooting ranges. I think this just kind of emasculates everything that was done, and that's it.
Other comments?
A question for Commissioner Kelly.
Go ahead.
What was your plan on tabling it? Were you thinking we would continue to review this, or...
Well, I believe the tabling sends it back to where it was before we started today, and that's the old conditional use permit. Then, the question becomes whether or not they want to pursue the original request, which was to... I mean, this is a... This is a modification of the original request to add five shooting ranges. According to what I understood Kirsten said, he suggested revoking every... Or not doing this and letting it go back to where it was originally. Am I correct there, Kirsten? Basically, that it would put us back to where we were before the request was made?
My recommendation that I spoke to isn't exactly the same as tabling it. Tabling it would keep the appeal here of this current permit, rather than voting to adopt or deny it at this level. So, actually, tabling it here would keep it here on appeal posture.
What sends it back to the Planning Commission?
Well, the only thing that would send it back to the Planning Commission here is a denial here with instructions to consider the old permit, so...
Any other questions or comments?
Got your one more substitute motion.
Sure, go ahead.
Motion is to deny and send back to the Planning Commission.
We have a motion to deny. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion unanimously dies.
No, it just dies. It doesn't unanimously.
Dies, but I can do my own legal opinion. You know, if I might, just make a couple of comments as chair privilege, and then I'll ask for a vote. You know, I'm convinced we're not that far apart between the two parties. This is an incident that happened one time in 34 years. That's like driving down the interstate, somebody getting killed, and we close the interstate. That is not what either one wants to do. If you guys want to talk about this, I think that you're not really too far apart. I don't think it has to go to court. I do think the range can continue to operate. I do think you can feel comfortable after you have that conversation. I want that to happen. I think both of you really want to have the safest facility and the safest neighborhood you possibly can have. Emotions are part of this whole process. I understand that. I wish it was simpler, but I really think you guys can make a decision without us tabling it, denying it, or whatever, and we need to move on and to get you to do that. And hopefully, you won't go to court. You'll get together and make it work. That's all I'll say. And with that, I'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Barth?
Hi.
Hyberger?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Peckus?
Yes.
Vinega?
Yes. Motion passes four to one. Hopefully, if you need interpretation on what we just did...
Watch the video.
You can either watch the tape over again, or you can go to Planning and Zoning, and they'll try to give you their representation, or obviously, talk to Kirsten in reference to the policy, and we frankly thank you for your time and your input, and I know it's been a lot of work for both sides, and hopefully, you guys can come to a conclusion.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I think somebody turned the heat up in here, too.
I was freezing, but I didn't do it.
Thank you.
Glad that you...
Thank you. You?
Thank you, thank you.
Item...
No, I turned it up, because I was freezing. I was sitting there shivering.
We need to finish the agenda. This will go to item 18.
Item 18 is Commissioner Lay's on reports.
If we could have the conversations kind of go on outside for a second? Thank you.
I had an accident, but they're still in session, so I'm going to finish that.
Wait just a second, Ken, if you don't mind, have them clear.
People are walking around.
No. Wrecked my car, though.
You wrecked your car.
I think we're ready to continue. Ken, please, item 18.
I'm sorry, I have a new business item.
Okay. Well, does anyone have any lay's on reports?
I would just quickly say that the museum is actually... The board was actually considering not accepting anything into their collections, because they don't have room for them.
Okay.
They're going to dis... Whatever it is where they get rid of... Disascendee... I have... There's a word for it. Get rid of some stuff so they have more room. I noticed on the list, where's a couple of Ringer washing machines, which most of you are too young to remember.
Okay, thank you. Any other lay's on reports? Otherwise, we'll go to new business. Ken McFarlane?
Commissioners, I just wanted to give you an update on some of the activities that have gone on. This was a result of the storm, and I'm just going to read you a press release that was issued by the EOC here at 10:30. As of 9:00 AM, the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County have activated the Emergency Operations Center. The EOC will coordinate efforts to respond to issues related to the winter storm currently moving through the area. The EOC also serves as the information point for responding agencies and the general public. At this time, some of the most urgent issues crews are responding to include, within the city of Sioux Falls, multiple downed trees across the metro area. To report downed trees in the city, please call the Sioux Falls Street Department at Removing downed trees is a high priority at this time in order to clear streets prior to the expected snowfall later in the day. Also, sporadic power outages and downed power poles in the area. As of 10:00 AM, Excel Energy was reporting 4,000 customers without power. Please call 1-800-895-1999 to report a power outage or downed power lines, and also standing ice and slush on the roadways. For road conditions, please call 511. In Minnehaha County, the Minnehaha County Highway Department reports that travel is difficult across the county. Many areas are also dealing with multiple downed trees and power lines. It is critical that individuals stay away from any downed power lines and report the location of downed lines to Excel Energy immediately at 1-800-895-1999. This information will be updated throughout the day and as conditions change. Please be aware that weather predictions for the day include increasing winds with gusts of 40 to 45 miles per hour and a return of rain changing to snow this afternoon and evening. Again, to report downed trees, call the Sioux Falls Street Department at 605-367-8255, and to report power outages, call Excel Energy at 1-800-895-1999. And so, the EOC has taken a little bit of a lull right now in their monitoring situation because of the lull in the weather, but the EOC will be in operation and monitor conditions as... And respond to conditions as they want.
And I'm living proof of trees taking out power lines, because my house is without electricity.
Thank you.
As is my backyard.
Other new business? Commissioner Hyberger, we're glad you made it after going into the dud. Appreciate your extra effort. Thank you. Other? Yes, please.
We were asked to come at 10:00 this morning for property abatement, property tax for abatement.
Okay.
Is that new or old? I'm sorry, I don't even know what that was.
You haven't even started yet.
Perfect. I'm getting out of your way. Thank you.
And that we had originally scheduled, you know, based on the length of the agenda. Remember, you have boards of equalization that were to commence at 10:30 today. I know equalization had asked folks to be here a little early, depending on the hearing, and your hearing is run over. And that so, the one issue I wanted to talk to you, you were scheduled for an exec session for personnel. I have contacted HR to see if that could be delayed for a week, and there's no issue with doing that. So, if you want to take a little bit of a break, and you'll have to adjourn as a board and reconvene as a board of equalization to consider some of the appeals and the tax-exempt applications that are here for your consideration.
Thank you, and we apologize for the length of the session, so to speak. Thank you, and we apologize for the length of the session, so to speak, before, it was hard to cut that off.
Consider it a civics lesson.
Yeah.
Move to adjourn.
Any old business?
No, we aren't there yet.
If not, entertain a motion to adjourn, and that we'll reconvene as the Board of Equalization in five minutes.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, we'll see you.